Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Ghorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. Today is December 1st, 2025. Hope everybody was able to enjoy a nice Thanksgiving weekend with family and friends. We're joined today by Commissioners Benjamin Sirullo Crowell, who's with us on Zoom, Dweck Gold, Kermani, Mann, Osorio, and Rampershead. So thank you all for being with us. I think we're gonna see one or two more after we get started. Before we dive into today's agenda, I just want to quickly share some recent news from the Department of City Planning. First, our Fresh Program continues to pay off for New Yorkers with another new store opening in downtown Brooklyn. This supermarket, Aldi, is one of forty-seven such stores located within thirty-one community districts throughout all five boroughs, with many stores now serving former food deserts. This means that the Fresh Program is now serving over 1.7 million New Yorkers, who previously had limited access to fresh foods. And with thirty-five more supermarkets in the pipeline, we look forward to helping even more New Yorkers access affordable, healthy groceries. Let's turn to today's agenda. We're gonna kick things off with a proposed de-mapping by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation on the Lower East Side. The agency is asking to eliminate a portion of Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington to transform the Allen Street Mall median into a public park and to repurpose the closed restroom as a concession stand to serve the community. Next, we're gonna head to Bayside, Queens, for another de-mapping. St. Mary's Healthcare System for Children is looking to eliminate portions of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Little Neck Boulevard, most of which are mapped but unbuilt. This change would allow the hospital to construct a new entrance vestibule to its main lobby, including two drop-off canopies and improved driveway circulation that would better serve its patients and staff. From there, we'll go over city council modifications for Seventeen-Twenty Atlantic Avenue in Crown Heights, Brooklyn. This project would create three hundred new homes, more than eighty of them income-restricted or affordable, and include commercial and community facility space. For our post-hearing follow-ups, we'll discuss what we heard at our recent public hearing on Three-Ninety-Five Flatbush Avenue Extension in downtown Brooklyn. Proposed by the New York City Departments of Housing Preservation and Development, Citywide Administrative Services, and Health and Mental Hygiene, this mixed-use project would include over twelve-hundred new homes, of which between three-hundred-twenty-five and three-hundred-seventy-nine would be income-restricted, as well as a mix of ground-floor retail and community facility space, a new entrance to the BQNR trains at the DeKalb Avenue subway station, and nearly five thousand square feet of public open space. This proposal is the first one to implement aspects of the Department of City Planning's Downtown Brooklyn and Fort Greene Eds and Meds framework to guide this area's growth as a twenty-four-seven neighborhood, and the first in Brooklyn that would use new high-density zoning districts enabled by City of Yes for housing opportunities. So with all that, Madam Secretary, let's kick things off and get to our certification.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, December 1st, 2025. The time is one oh six, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment and a zoning text amendment in Manhattan, Community District Three, and our presenter is Abraham Abreu.
Hello? Hi, I'm Abraham Abreu, and this project is Allen Street Mall de-mapping on the Lower East Side of Manhattan, Community District Three. Do I have to turn this on, too? All right. So yes, this is an application by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation, located on Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington Street on the Lower East Side. It's a C-44A and C-62A zoning district. The Parks Department is requesting two actions. First, a city map amendment to eliminate, discontinue, and close a portion of Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington Street, and to designate that demapped area as park. Second, they're seeking a zoning text amendment to preserve current zoning regulations regarding regulations for lot-fronting wide streets. With action, or these actions, rather, would facilitate the transfer of full site control to Parks, allowing the agency to manage and enhance the space. A key focus of the application is repurposing the shuttered restroom facility to better serve the community and create a more functional and more welcoming public space. So a little bit of background about the project. Again, so this is Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington Street is currently mapped at a hundred-and-thirty-eight feet wide, and it is a city-owned right-of-way under DOT jurisdiction. The Allen Street malls occupy the center median of this corridor and are divided into nine sections, stretching between East Houston Street to East Broadway, covering approximately one-point-six acres in total. These malls were constructed originally in the mid-nineteen twenties, and since nineteen-twenty-nine, Parks Department has maintained the Allen Street malls through an agreement with the then-borough president Julius Miller. In the nineteen-thirties, a one-thousand-seventy-five-square-foot restroom facility was constructed on Allen Street Mall, and in nineteen-thirty-eight, the Board of Estimate approved a resolution that transfer the restroom facilities from the borough president jurisdiction to the Parks Department. Then in nineteen-fifty, the restroom was closed, and the building has remained shut since. In recent years, Community Board Three has called, advocated for deactivating the building to restore it for community use. Through coordination with DOT in Parks, it was determined that to accomplish this, that they would need to de-map the right-of-way and map it as parkland in order to advance any deactivation that would occur. In twenty-fifteen, Department of Finance officially assigned Block Four-Fifteen, Lot One-Hundred-and-Fifty, to the mall to help provide the administrative foundation for future redevelopment and community activation. And Parks will continue to work with the community to identify a specific use for the site. Here is our land use map showing the surrounding area. Again, the Allen Street Mall, extend between East Houston and East Broadway, passing through Lower East Side, the Bowery and Chinatown neighborhoods. The area falls primarily within a C-62A and C-44A zoning district, and is characterized by primarily mixed use, median to higher-rise residential buildings with ground-floor commercial uses, such as eateries, small boutiques, and personal service establishments. This area includes, you can see the area proposed to be de-mapped highlighted here on this aerial, this area includes several cultural and educational institutions, such as a tenement museum and five charter schools. It is well-served by public transit, including the FJZ FM trains, multiple bus lines that have dedicated bus lines on Allen Street and on Delancey Street. In terms of open space, the project, the resource for the project is Saturday Roosevelt Park, which is a seven-point-eight-acre park that features playgrounds, sports courts, a roller rink, and a turf soccer field. There are additional smaller community gardens and playgrounds throughout the neighborhood. So the project area highlighted here consists of an existing nine-thousand-three-hundred-foot section, square-foot section of the Allen Street Mall. Again, you can see that Lot One-Fifty of Block Four-Fifteen is assigned, already assigned to this space. Design this designation, the current map street width is a hundred-and-thirty-eight feet, which qualifies as a wide street. The mall divides north and southbound travel, limiting the map width on each side to fifty-six feet, which includes thirteen-foot sidewalks, a parking lane, a dedicated bus lane, a vehicle travel lane, and a bike lane in each direction. The mall is currently landscaped with trees, a fire, picket fence, benches, and the shutter restroom facility at the south end. Pedestrian access is limited by this fencing, and the closed restroom prevents entry to the mall from the Delancey Street intersection. So let's take a look at a couple of site photos to get our bearings here. You can see in each of these images, the area proposed to be de-mapped highlighted in that yellow dash line. So this first is a view of looking towards the mall northeast from Delancey Street. This is a view of Allen Street Mall facing northwest, and you can see the bus-only lane in the foreground. And here is a mid-block portion of the mall that is proposed to be de-mapped. So as mentioned, there are two actions being requested as part of this proposal. The first is the city map amendment to eliminate, discontinue, and close this highlighted portion of Allen Street between Delancey and, excuse me, and Rivington Street, and to establish that area as parkland. The second is a zoning text amendment to widen, modify the wide-street definitions in twelve-dash-ten. Would amend zoning resolution twelve-dash-ten to allow roadways of Allen Street between Rivington and Delancey Streets, which are separated by Mac Public Park, shall each be constituted a wide street. This is to preserve the existing regulations in terms of setbacks and other things that are tied to whether buildings on a wide or a narrow street. And this has precedent, this was done on Broadway between Ninety-Fourth and Ninety-Seventh Street on the Upper West Side. This text amendment. So to summarize, the Department of Parks and Recreation is seeking these two actions: a city map amendment to eliminate, discontinue, and close this portion of Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington, and a zoning text amendment to preserve current zoning regulations regarding lots fronting a wide street or properties fronting Allen Street between Delancey and Rivington Street. This is in service of designating this area, de-mapped area, as public park, giving Parks full site control and allowing them to repurpose the closed restroom as a concession to meet community needs. So that's the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Just so, to quickly summarize, it's mapped as a street. De-mapping allows Parks to take it over, take a facility that was created as a restroom but has been closed since nineteen-fifty?
Yeah, correct.
So for seventy-five years, use it as a concession, undetermined precisely what, but it would allow for a concession to take place there.
Correct.
And the text amendment is important because today, Allen Street is defined as a large street, but once you take the middle part out, you have two fifty-six-foot north and southbound roadbeds.
Correct.
Which would technically be.
Narrow.
A narrow street, but this would redefine it for the purposes of what is a wide and narrow street, so that nothing falls out of compliance. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Benjamin?
Very much. I have three questions. The first is, will? Nobody wants to hear me, anyway. The first question is, will this concession be considered a major concession?
Great question, and it does not meet the, any of the thresholds or definitions for major concession.
And why?
The square footage is too low, and it doesn't, I, the percentage of the area is too low, and I don't remember all of it, but we did look through.
Okay, you can get back to me.
We did look, and we went check by check, and it doesn't mean any of them.
Okay, and with respect to the text change, how many properties, but for the text change, how many properties would become non-complying?
That's a good question. I'm not sure, but we can look into it.
Okay, I'd like, and how many vacant properties are they, are there, that would be affected by this text change?
I also need to get back to you on that one, because I don't know off the top of my head.
Somebody seems to be coming, too.
Thanks, Commissioner Benjamin. My name is Stephen Leonard. I'm the Director of Technical Review. So a couple of things on the text change. It's a good question, and we'll get back to you on that. But the, some of the other thinking around it is that the condition there really does resemble a wide street. You know, it's, it's gonna be a hundred-and-thirty-eight feet wide, it's gonna be largely clear and open and allow for light and air. So we, it was deemed appropriate, or you guys deem it appropriate, but we thought it might be appropriate to have this block considered a wide street, even if the mapped width is two fifty-six-foot widths instead of one larger width that exceeds the seventy-five-foot limit in the zoning resolution. The other thing is that there's precedent for this. Broadway between, I think, Ninety-Third and Ninety-Seventh, on the Upper West Side, had a similar text amendment done in the two thousands, I think, to solve the same, same problem.
Right, but I'm not sure, I wanna make sure there is a problem first, which is why I wanna know how many vacant properties that, I mean, if all the properties are already built, they would be non-complying, but that would not have the same effect. So I wanna know the details to determine whether we really need to do this.
Absolutely, and we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I have two questions. One is, can you, do you know, or can you share a little bit about, to what extent has the community been consulted on this specifically? I know that despite this facility being vacant for a long time, there's been a lot of planning around activating the site under or by the L E S Ready Coalition, given the impact of Superstorm Sandy here for many different things, including potential emergency management operations and recovery. And so that's one question. Do you know, or is it possible to know whether the city has actually reached out to the community in this regard?
Yeah, my understanding is that the Parks has been talking for a while about this, but.
Yes, so far, to my understanding, like, Parks has been the one reaching out to the community regarding, like, activating spaces, but I think they need to get into further detailed discussion on what are they going to, like, use the bathroom once this action is approved.
Okay, yes, if you can share a little bit more, and specifically whether the L E S Ready Coalition has been contacted on this, I would appreciate that. I know that there's been a lot of planning around emergency management, and this specifically, these two open spaces and the facility have been part of that. The other question is, so, just to kind of, to understand, again, with, with the acknowledgement that this has been vacant for a long time, I'm actually curious in hearing or knowing how many public bathrooms are there in this area? So if somebody is actually looking for a public bathroom, what are the, what are the alternatives? Do we know? Have we looked into that?
We haven't, but we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. That'll be great.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mann?
Yeah, just a quick question about the Allen Street malls, and so this, this one block front is being designated a park, but the block fronts to the south, which are also similar kind of in condition, will continue to be managed by DOT? Is that right, or?
Yeah, it's just this one block that would be de-mapped.
Is there, is there a logic to having one block managed by Parks and the adjacent blocks managed by DOT, just from a city operations standpoint? Or does Parks manage them all today, under a?
I believe all managed by DOT, but it's, it's.
No, if I could, if I could clarify, so the malls, I think, are considered to be green space, and they are managed by Parks today. I'll one-hundred percent confirm that, but I'm fairly certain that that's the case today. And so this de-mapping just allows them to have greater control over the block that has the building on it, that they wanna further develop.
Yeah, so I guess just my follow-up question is, would not make sense to have all of them de-mapped as city parkland if they're functionally city parks? Like, is there a reason to create that distinction between Parks and DOT?
I think there's a logic to treating them all the same. It's a bigger lift administratively to make that change, but we'll, we'll talk to Parks about, you know, what, what their, their thinking is about, about that.
Yeah, it just seems like if we're trying to clean up the mapping actions, then we might as well just do it now, because it's harder to do two applications rather than one, but I'd be interested to hear what Parks has to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Sorry, just sort of following up a little bit on, on that point. Aside from the restroom, are there other thoughts at this point for the rest of the block, or is it still something where, you know, if Parks ends up in the position of control, the restroom seems to be before getting conclusion, and the rest of it is TBD?
I don't know that they have any specific plans for the, the rest of that as of yet. I think that's still being, being worked out.
Yeah, but they'll be able to speak with more authority on it.
So what, out of curiosity, I guess, it's, it's been a lot of years, and I mean, it does make sense, clearly, it doesn't look like a really fantastic facility at this point, so clearly could use some help there, and a restroom does seem to make sense, but what's, what's driving this process? Like, what brought this on today?
Parks will be able to give you the, the full history, but my understanding is that, so it's not a restroom today. Restroom in nineteen-fifty.
Right, right, right.
And it has been shut since then, and there's been interest from the community in seeing that space activated, and that's what's, what's driving it, but Parks will be able to give you more details about the conversations that have been happening.
Perfect, yeah, I mean, I guess to Commissioner Osorio's point, it would definitely be helpful to see, to get some sense for what area of the community that's coming from, to just to make sure that that really is, you know, sort of the optimal use. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, we're certified. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Marin had a question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Marin?
Yes, thank you. Question is, um, I'm sorry, I lost it there for a minute. It had to do with the restrooms, and that's, oh, so has the community indicated what? They'd like to see that, that asset activated as?
As I said, they've been having conversations with Parks. I don't know what that, if they've expressed any particular preferences or ideas, but we can, we can look into that, and Parks will be able to talk about that as well.
Yeah, if we can just get, you know, a realm of ideas, because I, I concur with some of the statements made by my fellow commissioners. You know, we keep talking about bathrooms are needed in the public space, and yet we're taking an asset that may be able to be reused as a bathroom, and it's not, you know, in the Bronx, they did, they did one, and it was fabulous. It's a, it's now a fast-food restaurant, I can't remember which one it is, and it looks great, but if we know that we have an asset that might be able to be turned back to what it was, and the community is also saying we need bathrooms, I think that needs to be considered.
All right. Yeah, we can look into, to, to that.
And we'll definitely, we'll definitely ask Parks to, to be able to, to speak to that when they come for the hearing.
Sure, because it'd be interesting, you know, to align the community, you know, thoughts and, and the fact that there is a, an existing facility that was once a restroom. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Back to you, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick follow-up. The, do we know why the city hasn't been operating a bathroom, public bathroom here? I mean, what's been the, what are the constraints, what have been the limitations? Why are, why is this vacant, basically?
That's a good question. We can ask Parks. I'm not sure what the, kind of, the impetus of it shutting down was.
Thank you, that'll be useful, just, there may be constraints that we're not aware, but it would be important to understand why hasn't this been used as a public bathroom, yeah?
And actually, Commissioner, while you have the mic, you mentioned earlier a specific organization you wanted us to check to see if they, could you remind me what that is?
Yes, the Lower East Side Ready.
Okay.
Is a, is a coalition of organizations that put together an emergency management plan after Superstorm Sandy.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kermani?
Thank you. Just to note that this is the, the Allen Street, this particular block is the first assignment every year in my urban planning graduate class at Wagner. I have years of ideas from the community, and I'm totally honest, if it's helpful to send a list of the organizations that students have talked to, that have wanted to talk to them, businesses who have thoughts on this, please just send me an email, and I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, now we're certified. Thank you. Let's move on to item two.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment in Queens, Community District Eleven, and our presenter is Juanita Halim.
Hello.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Chair Ghorodnik and Commissioners. Today I'll be presenting the application of St. Mary's Hospital de-mapping. This is an application by St. Mary's Healthcare System for Children, and the project site is located in the Bayside neighborhood of Queens, Community District Eleven, and is situated in an R2A zoning district. The, the application is proposing a change to the city map to eliminate two privately-owned unboth streets and to discontinue and close a portion of the street. The proposed action will support the construction of a new two-hundred-and-fifty-seven square-foot entrance bus people to the hospital's main lobby, along with two drop-off canopies and enhanced internal traffic circulation. The Alpican is seeking this action to remove existing encumbrances on the hospital property and facilitate decide improvements. The Alpican site serves as the headquarters of the St. Mary's Healthcare System for Children, and it is currently developed with St. Mary Children's Hospital, along with accessory structures and surface parking lots. The hospital was originally built in nineteen-fifty-eight and underwent major innovations and alterations between two thousand nine and two thousand thirteen. The project area and Alpican site are co-terminous with the St. Mary's Healthcare System for Children's Hospital campus. The project area, shown in blue on this slide, covers approximately two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand square feet and includes portion of the Twenty-Nine Avenue and Little Neck Boulevard, as well as a four-thousand-four-hundred square-foot city-owned sliver within the bed of the map Twenty-Nine Avenue, illustrated with the orange dash dot dash line. On the map, the solid thin black line shows the street line, the thin gray dash line shows the tax law boundaries, and the solid purple line shows the building footprint. North is oriented to the left. The Alpican site includes Block Sixty-Nineteen, Lots Two, Five, and Forty-Five, and Block Sixty-Fifty-Nine, Lots One and Twelve. The area purpose for de-mapping is highlighted in yellow and includes maps but on both segments of both streets. The segments are seventy feet wide and privately owned by the Alpican, except for the city-owned portion. The streets are not built and are not used for public access or transportation. To prefer helpful context for the purpose map changes, I'll briefly outline the history of the tax laws and the streets to be de-mapped. So in nineteen-forty-eight, the Alpican acquired Block Sixty-Fifty-Nine, Lot One. At that time, two portions of the lot and a strip along the western edge within the map Two-Sixteen Street and a small triangular section on the southern side within the bed of the map Twenty-Nine Avenue were due to the city for street purposes. In the end, only one portion of the Sixteen Street was constructed, and Twenty-Nine Avenue was never built, and the hospital was constructed on Lot One in nineteen-fifty-eight. In nineteen-eighty-three, the hospital acquired Block Sixty-Fifty-Nine, Lot Twelve, and Block Sixty-Nineteen, Lot Two, Five, and Forty-Five, which include portions of the map Twenty-Nine Avenue and Little Neck Boulevard. These parcels were incorporated into the hospital campus for accessory parking and ancillary uses. These parcels were incorporated into the hospital campus for accessory parking and ancillary uses. A small portion of twenty-nine Avenue owned by the city became completely surrounded by hospital-owned parcels and was inadvertently incorporated in the hospital campus. The project area is located within the R two A zoning district, surrounded by R one two zoning district, and comprised of low-rise and low-density detached homes on small lots. Directly north is Great Skrane Presbyterian Church, and about four hundred feet south is the seventeen-acre Joan Golden Park. To the east is the Cross Island Parkway, major thoroughfare with six lanes of traffic. A forested green buffer separates the site from the highway, and beyond the parkway is the Cross Island Greenway, public open space with walking and biking paths overlooking Little Neck Bay to the east. The area surrounding the development site is not water for public transportation. There are no nearby subways, and the closest bus route is Q thirteen between Fort Torden and Flushing, which runs along Bell Boulevard, about one-third of a mile west of the development site. I will now share several side photos taken around the project area. This is view looking east towards the project area from the intersection of the sixteen street and twenty-nine Avenue. As you can see in the image, um, there is the main entrance of San Mary's and the portion of twenty-nine Avenue purpose to be demapped in the yellow dash line. This is a more zoom in, uh, view looking east towards the project area from the intersection of the sixteen street and twenty-nine Avenue. This image shows a portion of twenty-nine Avenue purpose to be demapped. This is view looking east along the privately owned section of twenty-nine Avenue, taken from mid-block within the project area. This includes portion of twenty-nine Avenue to be demapped. This is view looking west along the privately owned section of twenty-nine Avenue, taken from mid-block within the project area, showing the purpose twenty-nine Avenue to be demapped. And lastly, this is view looking south towards the project area along the Little Neck Boulevard from twenty-eight Road, and the image shows the section of Little Neck Boulevard purpose to be demapped. The applicant is seeking a change to the city map to eliminate two privately owned unbilled streets, a portion, a portion of twenty-nine Avenue between sixteen street and Little Neck Boulevard, and a portion of Little Neck Boulevard between twenty-eight Road and twenty-nine Avenue. And to discontinue and close, a portion of twenty-nine Avenue between the sixteen street and Little Neck Boulevard. The streets will be demapped up to the existing private property line. Although these streets are now required for street uses, their map street status prevents construction within street beds. And this has created planning and logistical challenges during recent renovations to San Mary's campus. The proposed change would allow the hospital to reconfigure its entrants and expand the main lobby to improve daily visitors' access and improve patient intake and discharge flow, the needs that became especially evident during the recent pandemic. The action would not increase hospital bus or traffic, and that the elimination of the privately owned map and unbilled streets will enable a more efficient circulation plan for vehicles and buses throughout the campus, improving the overall experience for patients, families, and visitors. All proposed modifications comply with existing R two A zoning regulations for community facilities. To summarize, uh, San Mary's Healthcare System for Children is requesting a city map amendment to eliminate maps but unbilled privately owned portions of twenty-nine Avenue and Little Neck Boulevard, and to discontinue and close a portion of twenty-nine Avenue. These streets are now used for public access and currently restrict the hospital's ability to optimize its campus layout. The proposed city map change would facilitate the construction of a new entrance bus people to expand the main lobby, including two drop-off canopies and enhanced traffic circulation within the campus to better accommodate patient or visitor traffic. These improvements are intended to support more efficient and accessible operations without increasing the hospital capacity. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Nice job. We're now certified. Let's move on.
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a notice of intent to acquire office space in Brooklyn Community District eight, and our presenter is Jordan Fred.
Hi, Jordan. Okay.
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, I will be presenting a notice of intent to acquire office space by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services and the New York City Administration for Children's Services pursuant to Section one ninety-five of the New York City Charter. Next slide. There we go, thanks. Uh, DCAST and ACS propose to acquire office space at one thousand and ten forty Dean Street in the Crown Heights neighborhood of Community District eight in Brooklyn. The acquisition of this space is intended for ACS Brooklyn East Division's new offices. The applicants propose to acquire one hundred five thousand square feet of office space at one thousand Dean Street and nine hundred twenty square feet of parking space at ten forty Dean Street, which would provide three parking spaces. One thousand Dean Street is a mid-block property bounded by Dean Street to the north, Franklin Avenue to the east, Classen Avenue to the west, and Bergen Street to the south. Ten forty Dean Street is located on the same block, but on the southwest corner of Dean Street and Franklin Avenue. ACS Brooklyn East Division currently has two offices. They are located at twelve seventy-four Bedford Avenue in Bedford-Stuyvesant and twenty-five fifty-four Linden Boulevard in East New York, and they can be seen on this map. The project site is also outlined in a, uh, the yellow star outlined in a, uh, black line at the left-hand side of the map. The project site falls within the recently adopted Atlantic Avenue Special Mixed Use District. One thousand Dean Street, the site of the proposed office relocation, is in an M one-two A zoning district. M one-two A districts have a maximum FAR of three point zero for all allowable uses, which typically include light industrial uses such as woodworking shops, repair shops, and storage facilities. Professional and government offices and most retail uses are permitted. Ten forty Dean Street, where the proposed parking spaces are located, is located in an R seven A C two four zoning district. R seven A is a contextual district that allows for new medium-density residential development and community facilities, up to five point oh one FAR for qualifying affordable housing, and up to four FAR for community facility uses. The C two four commercial overlay permits certain commercial uses in use groups six, seven, eight, and nine, with a maximum commercial FAR of two point oh. Parking is not required for developments within the AIMUP district. I also want to highlight that this project site is located in the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan geography, which was adopted by City Council in May. A key goal of AIMUP was to increase the number of jobs along the Atlantic Avenue corridor and mid-block areas, in particular, jobs accessible to local residents. We are pleased to see the proposed relocation of more than five hundred jobs to AIMUP as an example of the sort of economic development the department envisioned and seeks to encourage near public transit. The project site includes a four-story, one hundred forty-five thousand square foot office building, built in nineteen sixty-five, where the proposed office space will be located, and an eight-story mixed-use residential and commercial building, built in twenty fifteen, where the parking spaces will be located. Separate entrances will be provided for clients and ACS staff in the office building. This is a view of the building looking southeast from Dean Street, directly onto the project site. On the left, uh, outlined in yellow, you see what would be the client entrance. And on the right, outlined in yellow, you see what would be the entrance for staff. Here is a view south from Dean Street, looking directly onto the project site. This, again, is where clients would enter the building. This is a view of fourteen hundred Dean Street, where the parking will be located, looking southeast from Dean Street. You can see the parking garage entrance, uh, right outlined in yellow. And, uh, just at the very left-hand side of the photo, you can see the Franklin Avenue shuttle as it starts to come above ground. And this is a view looking due east along Green Street, along Dean Street, excuse me. ACS is seeking this office space acquisition to consolidate its two existing offices in the Brooklyn East Division. The consolidation of these offices will increase operational efficiency and cost effectiveness for the agency. The new office space will accommodate about five hundred twenty full-time ACS staff and two hundred fifteen to two hundred eighty visitors per month. In addition to the main office building at one thousand Dean Street, ACS proposes to acquire nine hundred twenty square feet of floor area on the ground floor of ten forty Dean Street in order to provide parking spaces for three agency vehicles. The new site will feature improvements, including a separate ground floor entry for the ACS staff and the clientele, a pantry for emergency operations and clothing, a nurse's room for medical treatment, and a lactation room. The application materials include responses to how the proposed office space meets the consideration of the applicable fair share criteria. Pursuant to Section one ninety-five of the New York City Charter, the notice of intent was filed with the Department of City Planning on November nineteenth and referred to Brooklyn Community Board eight and all borough presidents on November twentieth. The department has not yet received any recommendations. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Jordan. Commissioner Benjamin?
Well, Section one ninety-five is generally for office leases.
Mm-hmm.
And the building that's at one oh four oh Dean will not have any office space. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's just the parking space.
It's just parking, and is that an allowable one ninety-five?
Uh, let me look into that and get back to you. Yeah.
Sorry, it's accessory to the office space, so, uh, we've, we've done that before with office space leases. But, but is it, since it's a separate address with no office space for the use? I, I'm not quite sure how we get to the accessory.
We'll, we'll confirm, we'll confirm for it, but that's how, but that's the process of this, which we have used. Okay, let me go on to, uh, did you have another question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Commissioner Ramperchad?
Uh, thank you. He, uh, just a couple of quick questions. What are the lease terms here?
It's a twenty-year lease.
Twenty. Uh, the other question was, uh, timeline. When would they be able to be fully operational if they've been taking over the space?
Um, I think they have not given me, uh, a set of dates yet for when they plan to be fully operational, but they'll be here on Wednesday, and I can.
Okay. My third question was, how many other locations did they look at before they, uh, chose this site? So I guess I'll wait for Wednesday.
Yeah, they'll be here on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Two quick questions. The first one is, so, so I understand the rationale for why this, this lot makes sense for the agency's needs, but I'm not sure I understand how is this really addressing the vision for economic development that, you know, was proposed with AIMUP? In my mind, this is very precious, commercial, uh, and potentially light industrial space. And so, so I want to understand more, sort of like, why, why does the department feel that this is kind of like a better investment in terms of how we want to use or, or, you know, how we should be using this space?
Um, so we feel that the creation of five hundred twenty jobs in this space is a, a level of job density that is really attractive for this area. Um, we, you know, as far as like the location, it sort of provides an ideal location for being, for the agents being able to go out into the field where they are. And the space is sort of ideally configured or can be ideally configured for ACS's needs. And so all of that to us speaks to why we think it's, it's reasonable for the agency to, to lease this site.
Thank you, thank you. That's useful. But these are not new jobs, right? We're just relocating, eh, eh, you know, the, the, to have, the consolidating two parts of the agency.
That's correct, yes.
We're not creating any jobs. Just my, my, my question to, which I encourage you to think about is, you know, why competing with, uh, other potential tenants here who may actually create employment? So it's just, just thinking in terms of like the general spirit of AIMUP and, and, and how do we, you know, really maybe, what is really the public benefit of this, given kind of like the opportunities for economic development that were stated in the plan? Something to think about. The other question that I had was, um, specifically in terms of, um, the, the parking.
Mm-hmm.
So can you say more about that? Eh, eh, I'm, I'm just also worried in terms of whether this amount of parking here makes, makes, is that the best, you know, use for the space too?
So they would be occupying, they would be leasing three existing spaces on the ground floor of an existing mixed-use building. This would not result in the creation of any new parking.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. That's useful.
Sure. If I could, uh, just add to what Jordan said about how this relates back to the, the vision of AIMUP. Um, I, I would say that, um, so first, uh, we do expect the community board to, to weigh in. Uh, they'll need to submit testimony for that. Our understanding too is that the, uh, the council member, uh, is doing a walk-through herself, building. Um, I would just add, um, a couple of things. First, uh, large, uh, major, uh, a good portion of the building has, has, or has been vacant. Um, and a large portion of the building is, um, has been used for, as office space, uh, for quite a few years now. Um, uh, so I think we, and then secondly, I would say that we, we also view ACS as a bit of an anchor, um, to kind of bring, uh, jobs that are, um, not just purely office jobs, but, but jobs that are, um, accessible to, to many residents, whether they live locally or in Brooklyn. Um, so we, we feel that it's, um, it's a good sign that the city is willing to, if you aim up as a place where, you know, jobs can flourish and it's, you know, as an alternative perhaps to like a central business district. Um, so we don't feel like that's necessarily the only type of job, but we think it, it's a good, uh, they could be a good anchor and kind of bring more investment in multiple types of jobs in the area.
Thank you. And I appreciate that, and I would love to hear more from you in terms of that, in terms, how are we substantiating those assumptions? Sounds to me that, you know, that could be the case, you know, there could be additional, eh, economic development to service, you know, the new employees. But I'm also worried that we may be competing with other companies who may be creating more employment. Also concerned that, you know, we just passed an incentive to attract light industrial here. And so this sounds like an opportunity to attract those, that that type of investment. And my, my concern is that we may be competing with it.
I'll, I'll just quickly note that, uh, ACS can, can speak, and DCAST as well.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Can speak to that and just, um, the ongoing work in the building and how it suits their needs. And so I, I think, um, but from our end, we think that this is generally compatible with the vision.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I mean, I look forward to, you know, engaging in these conversations that unfolds. I just want us and the City Planning Commission to keep in mind that this was, you know, an M two MX, and now we are, you know, discussing whether we should just have office space from a city agency who could be located in different places. But to your point, look forward to hearing on to Commissioner Ramperchad's question. What were the other options that were discussed and, and why is this the best one? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I also just want to clarify really quickly that this, uh, building, one thousand Dean Street, is located in an M one-two A zoning district. It's in the small corner of what, what had been an M one-two A, R six A district, and then that corner was carved out by council, so during the, during the modification process. So this portion actually would not be eligible for, uh, mixed-use residential light industrial at that site.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say was, uh, in this, uh, in this building right now?
Um, it is partially vacant and partially office space. Uh, the agency has told us that they have had some trouble getting a definitive list of the current occupants from the current building owner. So they can fill you in on Friday.
We'll pick, we'll, we'll pick it up at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the public hearing on Wednesday for this one. Let's move to the next item on the agenda, number four.
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit, a zoning text amendment, disposition of city-owned properties, and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District thirteen, and our presenter is David Weissglas.
Hello, David.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The project for you today is the Seaside Park and Community Arts Center Special Permit Project. Uh, this project was certified on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The three, one sec. Yeah. The three applicants for this project are a private applicant, Seaside Park LLC, as well as New York City Economic Development Corporation, or EDC, and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST. Uh, the project's located in Coney Island, Community District thirteen in Brooklyn. And it is located in City Council District forty-seven. Currently, the district of Councilmember Justin Brennan and of Councilmember Lette Kayla Santos Suizo. The proposed development includes the approval of the Coney Island Amphitheater for continued use via new special permit, codification of existing conditions on the site, and a small expansion of the project area. Five actions are being. Five actions are being requested by the applicants for this project. The first is a zoning text amendment to multiple sections of the zoning resolution to allow the CPC to permit an arena via special permit. The second is a special permit application for said reading. The third action is the acquisition of a portion of Block 7071, Lot 123, adjacent to the historic Child Building to be added to the project area. And finally, there are two separate dispositions. One disposition restricted by the conditions of the proposed special permit for the entirety of the project area. And secondly, another disposition of the adjacent Child Building and a small sliver adjacent to it, which is not restricted to the conditions of the special permit. Again, these actions are being sought to allow the continued use of the existing Seaside Community Arts Center, expansion of Seaside Park, and to reflect changes to the site since its original approval in 2013. The applicant is proposing the approval of the Coney Island Amphitheater for a new special permit with waivers for signage, parking, and loading. The special permit application will also codify existing conditions on the site. Additional, the proposal includes a portion of Lot 123 adjacent to the Child Building, as well as the enlargement of the project area to include additional open space on Lots 79 and 81, which can be seen here outlined in the dotted white line. Community Board 13 held a public hearing on the project on September 25th, 2025, and on October 22nd issued a recommendation of approval with conditions. The specific conditions can be found in the packet for the public and for yourselves, and are related to annual accountability to the community, a local hiring priority, the production of free community concerts and events, the support of local arts organizations, monitoring of sound levels, production of local graduation ceremonies at sliding sale rates, and the creation of community advisory committee to oversee compliance. The Borough President held a public hearing on this project on November 19th, 2025, and we have yet to receive a recommendation from the BP's office, but we expect it at any moment now, and we'll forward to you as soon as we have it available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Knuckles?
Thank you, Chair. Could you go back to, I believe it's Slide 3 in the requested actions?
Certainly.
Bullet 4, disposition of city-owned property of Lot 130 and part of 123, provided that the property is not subject to a special permit pursuant to CR section, et cetera. Elaborate if you will.
Certainly. So there's two separate dispositions, as you can see here. One is for the entire project area. That's restricted to the conditions of the special permit that's being proposed here today. However, the final bullet point you see here, the disposition that is provided that the property is not subject to a special permit, basically that's a fancy way of saying that these two lots basically refer to the Child Building and the adjacent small sliver that is being added to the project area today. What is being sought here is to separate the two dispositions. First, there's the disposition of the entire property, which will be restricted to the conditions of the special permit. The idea is that once that, again, this amphitheater is intended to be temporary, as there's the, you know, the Coney West sub-district plans are being realized. The idea is that once that is expired and the conditions of the special permit are no longer applicable, this gives flexibility to continue to tenant the Child Building and have it continue to operate effectively regardless of kind of what happens on the rest of the site long-term. So after this disposition of the city-owned property, which is restricted to the conditions of the special permit here, after that has basically lapsed, whatever the plans of those and whatever the status of those plans for the Coney West sub-district to be realized, the Child Building, which will remain regardless, can be tenanted without being restricted to conditions of another permit, which is why they separated it into two separate dispositions. But basically, the final disposition here, the final bullet point you see, is not really intended to come into basically effect until after the first disposition, the bullet point right above it, has expired or lapsed or is no longer applicable.
What is the duration of this proposed special permit?
Uh, so the special permit itself does not, the application itself did not have a term necessarily. The commission has the opportunity to place a term limit, but we do want to give the opportunity for the applicant to speak to that term limit on Wednesday at the public hearing. So if the commission sees fit, they are able to impose a term limit, but it's not being applicable right now, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. I mean, I look forward to discussing this as it unfolds, but I'm wondering, when we certified this, I asked about the extent of Superstorm Sandy impact here and what were some of the provisions in place to expand the arena, and so I'm wondering if, you know, unless you can share something now, whether the applicant team can come prepared to discuss that in detail?
Yes, we've made it clear that the applicant team should speak to that additionally. I believe I have some items here that...
Thank you.
They did provide a little bit of information. I just want to make sure that I have those details here, but again, I do think the applicant can speak to that a little bit more effectively.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, it's, I think, a priority strategic place for making sure that when, you know, that any public investments here are going to be protected, number one, but two, you know, what is the potential of this site to function or be activated within the potential coastal resilience system here and/or, you know, what potential role can this have as a critical, you know, public space in that regard moving forward?
Yes, certainly. We've looked into that, and we've recognized that that's a very important aspect of the site, and we've told the applicant to speak more to it, but we've definitely spoken to them a bit about it and just don't have it in my notes at the moment.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Um, two questions. One, I noticed that the existing special permit expired in 2023.
Uh, that is not accurate. I want to make sure I'm understanding the same thing. The special permit that is being active right now, that was 10 years from the, from when a TCO was obtained, which was actually in 2016. So that came later. So the expiration of this permit is not until 2026. I want to say June, because that was a 10-year term written into the ER...
Okay.
From the, from when they obtained a TCO.
Okay, because that wasn't clear that it was from the date of the TCO as opposed to the date of the approval.
Right, yeah. The previous special permit, that was actually written into the zoning resolution itself, which is now being proposed to be modified per the text amendment, but that was 10 years from the TCO, which was obtained in 2016.
Okay. And the second question is what, since EDC controls the part of Lot 123 currently?
I believe so. Here, let me go to the appendix. I think I have some better images here. There we go. Uh, yes, so that's that triangle outlined in red right there.
Um, and EDC is involved with finding a new tenant and user for Childs, is that correct?
Uh...
EDC and DCAST, I believe.
Right, there's an RFP currently out for the site yet.
Um, why dispose of it to us to dispose of that portion to whoever the final vendor is? Why not just have EDC do that?
Uh, I apologize. Do you mind stating that one more time?
Since EDC currently controls it and owns that little triangle part of Lot 123?
Yeah.
Why not just have them, since they're also involved in the whole RFEI process?
Hmm.
Why are we going through the acquisition to us to dispose of it? Why not just have EDC dispose of their part?
I, that may be a little bit above me. My understanding is that...
Okay, if you could let DCAST know.
Surely. My understanding is that's kind of like a legal requirement just to get the logistics in order. I don't know if it's necessarily possible for that to be skipped necessarily, or this to be skipped, but I can check with our council about that.
And the last question is, how is the public, since we're approving the disposition without a user and without any idea of what the use might look like, and it's not going to come back to us, how is the public going to be involved in knowing about this process and what the potential uses are?
Sure. So what we've done here is we've kind of split things up a little bit, right? So what's being requested are, you know, are certainly dispositions without a current operator or user because the RFP is out, but that's not to say that there aren't conditions being placed within the special permit application, right? And those are conditions are consistent with what exists for MSG, for example, Kingsbridge, other similar facilities. So there will be some regulation about that. When it comes to day-to-day operational details, we found that generally, DCP and the zoning text, it may not be the best way to enforce that, and what we spoke into the applicant about and what they intend to do is have a lot of those details worked out with the community and placed into their lease agreement and basically their contract with the operator that is to come, and that's more about day-to-day operations.
Right, but that's for the site that Seaside is using, but the site that's going to be tenanted for economic development purposes, Lot 130 and Lot 123?
For the Childs Building?
Right.
Hmm, yes.
How are, is one to know what uses could be there, and it will be too late to write that into our resolution certainly, or how will the community be engaged to determine what protections or other things might be necessary depending on the use that is chosen by DCAST and by EDC?
Understood. So a few things there. First, I'll let you know that the applicant has let us know that they continue to utilize the Childs Building as it has been used for, as just a public restaurant use and for private events and banquets, continuation of the current usage there. As it comes to protections, there are still, as I stated earlier, conditions that are placed within the special permit, which still applies to the Childs Building when it comes to, I don't know, noise regulations, things like that. Those are conditions that are still placed upon it by the special permit itself, so it's not that there are, you know, kind of no protections about that. As it comes to future use, I could talk to the applicant a little bit more and have them speak to that, but it is an interesting situation, given that the Childs Building, A, it's an historic, it's a landmarked building, to remain. It also does include portions of the amphitheater as well. The stage is actually housed within the Childs Building and some of that back operation. So I, my understanding is they intend to also include that in their agreement with the operator, when the operator is decided upon as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Chair. So I also noticed that there was no lease length, excuse me, no length of the special permit requested this time, but the last permit was for 10 years. And so I want to tie that in with the RFP. Do we know what the length of a lease may look like at EDC for this property?
Uh, so the length of the lease, if the commission so decides to put a term limit on this, it can be decided basically however you see fit. What I want to do is give the applicant opportunity on Wednesday to speak to that. There's some issues with the...
No, but we're not putting terms on the lease. We're putting terms on the special permit.
But I understand, so the commission has the opportunity to place a term on the special permit? I want to make sure I understand the question.
Well, that's where I'm going with this. So my question relating to, yeah, so my question, this is a two-part question. One is that we have a request for a special permit without a term identified. We had a special permit already in 2016 that had a term limit of 10 years, which would expire in 2026. This new one will supersede, this new special permit will supersede the existing special permit.
Hmm.
Again, no term has been identified. However, EDC in parallel has an RFP out there to do something with this space. Does EDC in its RFP indicate a length of lease proposed for that facility?
Uh, I don't know about that at this time. I'm not sure if they put it in the RFP. I think they wanted to check, basically coordinate with the CPC, and I think that their responses to the RFP may be in part dependent upon what that term is.
Okay, so if we can try and find that out, do you?
Certainly.
Historically, on a special permit like this, has there been sort of a, sort of historic precedent to special permit length that we should consider? Is there anything that the department can provide to us further for us to intelligently consider what a special permit length should be?
Sure. I mean, the previous special permit, as you noted, was 10 years from the TCO. We've had similar situations. For example, MSG didn't, was not applied to with a term limit in mind, but the CPC did decide to add a 10-year limit there. But my understanding is that was determined, and it's actually in the CPC report for that project, that came to be through communication with the applicant themselves to make sure that it was actually feasible with an operator. There are other situations in which no term employment was in place, so I'm a little bit wary of, a little bit nervous about putting, you know, a specific indication here without the applicant's input, as there could be some details there related to whether a certain term may make it more difficult for an operator to utilize the site looking forward, but I can continue to speak to the applicant about that and provide more information.
I do realize... David, I can jump in quickly here to a little more information. Just to clarify, RFP for this site has not yet been released. EDC can share an update on their RFP timeline at the public hearing on Wednesday. I'll note that, as David mentioned, the prior special permit did have a 10-year term limit on it baked into the zoning text amendment, recognizing the plans for Coney West, and this was to be a temporary 10-year use. You know, EDC can speak to, you know, current status of Coney West and how this fits into, you know, the near and long-term future of that area. Our understanding is that they will be seeking a similar lease, 10 years or so, but there are some, I think they'll be able to speak to some of the specifics around when that lease would start and what implications that might have in terms of a term limit here.
Thanks, Corinne. So see, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to tie in, knowing that EDC has this effort out there. I mean, it makes no sense if we're saying, okay, then give them a five-year special permit, and EDC is saying, we're trying to give them a 10-year lease. So what I'm trying to do is see if EDC has identified something so that our consideration could go along with what EDC is planning. That's all. So I appreciate the response, and once we get further information from EDC, if you can get that to us, that would be appreciated. And then my only other comment was that, you know, when we had the last special permit, one of the biggest issues was noise, and I see that it's coming up again. So it would be interesting to try and understand what is it, what is the noise that the community, what is it that is noisy for the community that they are saying there's still noise? So if we can find out what that is, we'd be great.
Certainly. That was included in the community board recommendation. We could speak more to that and make sure the applicant's prepared as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rampershead?
Just one quick question. You mentioned that the clock started when the TCO was issued in 2016. Is it required for them, because TCOs expire? Have they been actively renewing their TCO?
Um, my understanding is that yes, it's all aboard. I'll confirm with the applicant about the details of that, and my understanding is yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next item.
Thank you. The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens Community District 1, and our presenter is Colin Ryan.
All right. Hi, Colin.
Good afternoon, Chairs and Commissioner. This is a pre-hearing presentation regarding 3301 11th Street rezoning, located in Ravenswood, Community District 1, Queens. This application was certified on August 11th and is back for pre-hearing. The applicant proposed a 10-story mixed-use development containing 258 units, of which 77 would be income-restricted pursuant to MIH. The development would also include approximately 14,000 square feet of light industrial space, 9,000 square feet of commercial space, and 3,300 square feet of community facility To facilitate this development, the applicant... To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from an R5 district to an M14R7A district, indicated by the dotted black line on the image on the right. The applicant also proposes to map MIH options 1 and 2 co-terms with the rezoning area. According to the applicant, this rezoning is appropriate because it would reinforce existing land use patterns in the surrounding area and introduce new residential and complementary non-residential uses at higher densities along a wide street and near transit. On September 16th, 2025, Queens Community Board One voted 18 in favor, 17 against, zero abstentions, and 1 not voting for cause, a recommendation of disapproval with conditions. While the board did not formally submit conditions, their concerns centered around depth of affordability, unit sizes, and building operations. On September 18th, 2025, the Queens Borough President held a hearing for this application and submitted a recommendation of approval with conditions. Firstly, related to hiring goals and reporting to the Borough President and a council member. Secondly, that the applicant should commit to HPD's MIH Option 1 program. And lastly, to the best of their ability, the applicant will assess the studio to family-sized unit ratio and make changes to include more family-sized units. This concludes my presentation and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. We're going to pick this one up on Wednesday for public hearing, but I have a question from Vice Chair Noppes.
Yeah, on Wednesday, I'd like to know from the applicant, what measures are they taking, i.e. who are they working with to identify potential tenants for the light industrial space?
Sure, I can definitely let them expand on that at that time, but I'll just share for now that they're currently, the applicant is the Catholic Medical Mission Board, and they intend to also be occupying the community facility and the light industrial space. That light industrial space is intended to be part of a warehouse for their operations and distribution.
A warehouse?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, we'll pick this up one day. Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning text amendment and a modification to a previously approved certification in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Trevor Lovitz.
Hello, Trevor. Hello. This is a pre-hearing item for a private application at 1325 Avenue of the Americas, located in Midtown Manhattan, Community District Five. The applicant, La Grand Boucherie LLC, is requesting a zoning text amendment and a modification to the original CPC certification to facilitate three open-air cafes within the Through Block Galleria at 1325 Avenue of the Americas. This project was referred by the CPC on September 15th and is scheduled for a public hearing this Wednesday. 1325 Avenue of the Americas is located between Sixth and Seventh Avenues and West 53rd and 54th Streets in Manhattan. The project site contains a privately owned public space, or POPs, designated Through Block Galleria, which is the subject of this application. The applicant seeks a text amendment to Section 81, 231B of the zoning resolution and a modification to the original CPC certification. The proposed actions would permit open-air cafes within Through Block Gallerias, permit minor design upgrades within the Through Block Gallery at 1325 Avenue of the Americas, and facilitate open-air cafe use adjacent to and accessory to La Grand Boucherie and Kaiseki Room Restaurants located on the ground floor of the Through Block Galleria. On October 10th, 2025, Manhattan Community Board Five voted to disapprove the application with conditions by a vote of 32 in favor, 5 opposed, and 2 abstaining. TB5's disapproval was conditioned on the applicant providing meaningful bathroom access to the public. On November 17th, the Manhattan Borough President recommended approval of the application. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll pick this one up. One second.
Thank you, Chair.
Soria.
Sorry, one quick question.
Sure.
So we'll, we'll obviously bring this up when we have the public hearing, but I just wanted to ask you a question. So it sounds like what the community board is asking is pretty dual. From your point of view, from the department's point of view, you know, is this feasible? Why should we, or how should we think about it? Help us understand a little bit, you know, from your analysis.
Of course, yeah, this has been a longstanding initiative that Manhattan Community Board Five's, especially as it pertains to POPs approvals. In the past, they've requested bathroom access, and while that's not required by the zoning resolution, occasionally in the past, the applicant has worked with the private applicants to provide bathroom access. Eric, I don't know if you can elaborate on previous instances in which this was provided? I remember there was a passed approval where?
Yeah, good afternoon. It's essentially out of scope of the request, you know, it's not a requirement under zoning. But occasionally applicants, cafe operators will allow public restroom access. It is probably the minority of applications that we see, but again, it's not something that we enter into. It's a, you know, an agreement between the cafe operator and applicant.
No, thank you. I understand this is out of scope. It's not required, in other words. But it's just that, you know, to hear a community board vote against a proposal for that reason when that reason, when that problem can be solved, is, is kind of like something that I'm very interested in. And so I'm just wondering, from your point of view, whether you think that this is, or whether you know this is just unfeasible here, there are additional constraints, or it's just a matter of, you know, whether the applicant wants to do it or not when they could? That's, that's what I understand. Like, from your point of view, given the different precedents and your analysis of this particular one, is that a reasonable, you know, request?
We have heard from the cafe operator about this, and I think the applicant can speak to that on Wednesday. I'm not sure about the specific situation with the Grand Boucherie.
Thank you. Fair enough. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pick that one up Wednesday. Thanks.
The seventh item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for 1720 Atlantic Avenue rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH options 1 and 2 and adding options 3, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Any questions? Okay. I'll seek sent by voice vote now to send a scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Future votes for Wednesday, December 3rd. For consideration, we have 150 Flag Place in Staten Island, Community District Two, and briefing materials were placed in your materials, in your packages. Also, staff have prepared reports for 1417 Avenue U rezoning. There was a memo in your materials, and Griffin Mills is here on Zoom to present.
Chair, I'm recused on this one.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rappaport is recused.
Commissioner Crowell is also recused. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Say it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Next slide. This is a post-hearing staff recommendation for 1417 Avenue U rezoning. The department supports this application for a zoning map amendment to change the existing R5 C13 zoning district to an R5 and R7A C24 zoning district, a zoning text amendment to map MIH options 1 and 2, and the termination of a previous restrictive declaration. These actions will facilitate a new 83,000-square-foot, seven-story mixed-use building with 76 dwelling units, 19 of which should be permanently income-restricted, and approximately 11,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial use. The department notes that much of the Avenue U quarter has been mapped R5 C13 since the creation of the zoning resolution, with exception of some recent private rezonings for R6A. The current R5 C13 limits residential and community facility uses to a maximum FAR of 2 and commercial uses to a maximum FAR of 1, which has resulted in limited new development. The proposed R7A C24 district would allow for a maximum residential FAR of 5.01, 4 for community facility, and 2 for commercial uses. The department believes that the density and height permitted by the proposed R7A C24 zoning district is appropriate, given the location on an 80-foot-wide street in an area well-served by transit with a queue train station located a one-minute walk from the project area, as well as access to multiple local and express bus lines. The inclusion of MIH in this application will introduce much-needed new permanent income-restricted units in Brooklyn Community District 15, where fewer than 200 new income-restricted units have been constructed in the last decade. The department believes that the 1979 restrictive declaration to require the construction of a drive-through bank should be canceled and is no longer relevant to the property and is a hindrance to future development. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank you very much for facilitating the, the, the conversation with the applicant. I really appreciate that memo.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay.
For post-hearing follow-ups for the items heard on November 17th, on 1410 Beach Channel Drive rezoning and 7808 Linden Boulevard rezoning, Elike and Mia will present on December 15th. Next, we have 21714 Twenty-Fourth Avenue rezoning. Joy Chin is on Zoom to present.
This is a post-hearing staff recommendation for 21714 Twenty-Fourth Avenue rezoning. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map from an R12 district to an R6A district to develop a new eight-story residential building containing a total of 183 units, including 55 income-restricted units and a senior long-term care facility in the Bay Terrace neighborhood of Bayside, Queens. The proposed actions are appropriate to locate a higher residential density between two wide streets and the waterfront at Little Neck Bay, as well as a major, it's proximity to a major shopping center, and would bring much-needed housing, including affordable housing, to an area of Queens that has seen very little new housing production for the last 50 years. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, Chair. Was there an additional follow-up to the questions on the extent of potential flooding in the site and mitigation strategies?
You mean additional information written by, provided? I mean, the applicants didn't send us anything yet, but I know they, they do have mitigation, which they explained some of it and outlined some of their strategies for the drive floodproofing, and there's also going to be a green roof and vegetation that will be helping with stormwater runoff landscaping around, like, and bioswales around their site.
Thank you. If you don't mind following up and seeing if we can get a little bit more detail on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Next, we have 6312 Broadway rezoning. Faygula Leschner is here to present on Zoom. We'll just get the presentation up.
Um, it's another, it's not this presentation?
Uh, sorry, we'll just correct it and go back to Joy Chin for 24756 Ninetieth Avenue rezoning. Joy Chin on Zoom, and Faygula will be up next. Thank you.
Hi again, Commissioners and Chair. This is a post-hearing staff recommendation for 24756 Ninetieth Avenue rezoning. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map from an R41 district to an R4 district in the Bell Rose neighborhood of Queens Community District 13. The proposed actions would resolve the split-lock condition, enabling the applicant to redevelop its site with a new two-family, two-story home that otherwise would not be possible. The proposed R4 district is consistent with the scale and density of the surrounding area. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we do have 6312 Broadway rezoning. Faygula Leschner is here to present on Zoom. She's ready.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Wait a moment, Faygula. Go ahead.
The Department of City Planning staff finds the applicant's request for a zoning map amendment from R5 C22 zoning district to R7A C24 and R5 C24 zoning districts, and a zoning text amendment to map MIH options 1 and 2 to be appropriate. These actions would provide 67 new dwelling units, 22 of which would be permanently income-restricted. The proposed density is appropriate for this location with frontage on Broadway, an 80-foot-wide street, and in close proximity to multiple subway lines. The commercial overlay would continue to allow existing commercial uses and reinforce the local context of the ground floor and retail along Broadway. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Prospect Farm Acquisition. Juki Sai is here to present in person.
Hi, good afternoon. So I'm recused on this one.
Commissioner Soria is recused.
This is an application by Parks and De-cas for an acquisition of a privately-owned parcel, Lot 5267, Lot 19, for continued use as part of Prospect Farm Community Garden in Windsor Terrace, Community District 7, Brooklyn. This application certified June 30th, 2025. The CPC vote for this project is December 17th, 2025. The department believes this application for an acquisition of property by the Department of Parks is appropriate. The site is appropriate for continued use as a community garden and compatible with the predominantly residential uses that exist in the immediate vicinity of the project site. The department notes the importance of the garden to the local community and the positive impact that it has had on participants and neighbors. The department further notes that this acquisition would allow the city to enter into a 10-year renewable license agreement between Green Thumb and the Garden Group, making the garden eligible to receive labor and capital improvements from the Green Thumb program. Thank you.
Juki, I have a question for you from the Vice Chairman.
Yes. Juki, you may recall, when you last presented this, I asked whether or not this action, if approved, would then designate the land in question as parkland.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. So I clarified this with the Parks Department. I believe when I first answered, I said, yes, but let me check. The answer from Parks is that, no, it would not become parkland. They would acquire, but it is just acquired and city-owned property, but the designation of parkland, I believe, they don't, it's like community gardens are not appropriately, appropriate sites for the designation of parkland. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Thanks, Juki.
Thank you.
On Constellation CB3, CB5, CB16, and CB17 in Brooklyn, Veronica will join us on December 15th to present. Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, on 395 Flatbush Avenue, there was a follow-up memo in your materials, and we are joined by Amrita Mahesh, if there are any questions.
Any questions for Amrita? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, what else do we have on the agenda for today?
There's no other business for today.
With that, we'll look forward to seeing you all bright and early, not that bright and early, but early enough, 10 o'clock Wednesday morning. And with that, thank you all. We are adjourned.
The time is 2:28. The time is 2:28.